We're going to call the meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is public audience who'd like to begin. Joan.
Sure.
Joan Koch, 26 Wickton Drive. At the January 28, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting, I asked the Board of Selectmen to provide a written evaluation to the public of the selectmen's annual performance review of the town manager. To date, the Board of Selectmen is silent on my request. On November 14th and November 26, 2018, the Board of Selectmen went into executive session to discuss, quote, "an annual performance review of the town manager," end quote. After two lengthy sessions of executive session, why was the Board of Selectmen neglected to provide their written evaluation to the public? The Board of Selectmen has spent many hours developing and discussing a lengthy performance evaluation of the town manager under the direction of Deputy First Selectman Chris Kelly. Chris Kelly has distinguished himself in complete transparency in government affairs and appears to have dodged the most important action of his candidacy as Deputy First Selectman and Chairman of the Personnel Subcommittee by not providing the town manager's performance evaluation to the public. The Board of Selectmen has hired the town manager under contract and reviews the town manager's performance on a yearly basis before renewing the contract on behalf of the Simsbury residents. The voting public evaluates the performance of the Board of Selectmen. The performance evaluation of the town manager's critical action of the Board of Selectmen, since this is the first year of the transition from an elected first selectman as CEO to a contracted town manager. The town has a right to know how the Board of Selectmen has evaluated the person who is the CEO of the town of Simsbury when the Board of Selectmen provide the town manager's performance. When will the town, the Board of Selectmen, provide the town manager's performance evaluation to the town? And I would like to thank Town Manager Maria Caprioli for fulfilling my FOI request for all final reimbursements resulting in Jamie Rabbit's resignation as town planner. It was alleged that Jamie Rabbit was saying that he received large payments as a result of his resignation. Jamie Rabbit did not receive a severance package similar to past Administrative Assistant Tom Cook. Town Manager Maria Caprioli provided Jamie Rabbit with reimbursements required by law in a professional manner. After several discussions I had with an employee from Griffin Land and employees of Deepwater Wind, I was told that Deepwater Wind is no longer in the solar business and Northlight Energy purchased their solar business in Simsbury. Northlight Energy filed a stormwater permit application with DEP and has to return to the Siting Council for final approval. The land transfer from Culbrow to Northlight Energy has not been finalized. The land that is being developed by Northlight Energy has been a tobacco farm for many years. In 1984, the town tested many contaminated wells for EDB and Vorlex caused by Culbrow, mandating that Culbrow provide town water to the residents with contaminated wells. All the water in town comes from aquifers. The well at St. John's Place off Route 135 in the north end of town was contaminated and thorough, lengthy process removed the contamination, and this well provides water to Simsbury residents. The site where the solar farm will be developed should be tested for chemicals that were found in the contaminated wells associated with tobacco farming before going forward with approvals. Excuse me. An agenda item E under Selectmen Action, Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center, operating agreement amendment or request is asking the Board of Selectmen to reduce the fee for police private duty fees at concerts, reducing police revenues by $3,000 to $1,600, $1,600. The letter to the Board of Selectmen states, quote, "For the first time in 2018, we were unable to confirm a large-scale commercial, not HSO concert rental subsequently resulting in year-end loss. The loss had to do with the fact that large promoters are sucking the wind out of smaller venues with the ability to contract concerts. The SMA PC will continue to lose money with their present model, and giving a reduction of police overtime fees to a private organization will not alleviate the financial impact of outside influences." Is this amendment consistent with the police union contract? The Simsbury Golf Course has lost money year after year with the taxpayers subsidizing shortfalls. The Simsbury Farms Revenue Fund was put in place to track the expenditures and revenues of the golf course. Other towns have contracted out their golf course to alleviate the burden of the taxpayers and receive management from a professional management group that has the purchase power that a town golf course could not provide. The town should not be using donations to cover shortfalls in golf expenditures that are unreliable and unsustainable. It is time that the town includes an operational study in the budget for a thorough review of the Simsbury Golf Course. The taxpayers do not have unlimited resources to support a failing golf course. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Koch, and news feed on Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you, Joan. Would anyone else like to speak in public audience tonight? Yes, please.
Bob Beinsteine, 26 Fairview Street. Full disclosure, I'm a member of the Clean Energy Task Force. You're going to hear from a couple of members later. And I just wanted to offer a couple of remarks on the topic that they're going to present on. So Sustainable CT, you'll hear what it all is and everything. I'll have to say that when I first heard about it, I was a skeptic. I work in the sustainability field, so that seems a little weird. My concern was that we not spin the town's wheels to gain a piece of paper, a plaque on the door for a certification that didn't add value both socially and fiscally to the town. You know, it was pretty lukewarm for a while. We had some meetings, we had some presentations at our Clean Energy Task Force meetings. And then, you know, I know Eric Maria attended a presentation we had from Sustainable CT. And I've come to a little bit of a different opinion, and I just wanted to share why. I think this town, under Tom's direction, under some work that we've done recycling committee, has really made good strides. To some extent, they're baby steps. Got a lot more to do to become a sustainable town. What Sustainable CT brings to the town, in addition to the paper and, you know, the pedigree and what people like to tell it as economic development and whether or not that happens is a separate issue, is more of a tool for us all to get on the same page. We talk a lot about sustainability. Sustainability, people say, oh, we recycle, we put solar panels on our roof. That's not it. It's a holistic approach to how we run a town. And if we run the town sustainably, we all have to be on the same page. We have to be speaking the same language. We have to be having common understandings. And what I've seen in Sustainable CT is that it offers that to us from department to department, from board to board, when we talk about things, we'll have common terms. I have no desire to see this become a certification that, you know, it's cool, we got it, check, it's all good. I want to see it become a living process for us, so that as we evaluate actions, as we evaluate subcontracts, as we evaluate procurement actions, different things, we're keeping this in mind all the time. And it's not just because the world needs it. It's not just because humanity needs it, although those are good reasons. It's because this is a sustainable town, it's an efficient town, it's a fiscally responsible town, and I think there's a great deal of benefit to it. So I'll leave it at that. I'll take a second to sign my name, so I don't get yelled at.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. Great. Thank you. We will move on, then. We have three presentations tonight. The first is on the sidewalk study. A little bit of context, over the past year, our town has been working with an engineering firm, Beta Group, to evaluate our sidewalks and develop a long-term plan for maintenance. So presenting tonight will be Tom Roy, who's Director of Public Works, and Tony Garo, who's with Beta Group. Welcome, both of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Eric. Welcome, Tony. This has been a presentation that's been a long road to get here in that it goes back to an ordinance that we had in place, which basically said, and Simsbury is unique in this, is that our sidewalks were effectively the responsibility of the abutting property owner. So for years, the proper way to have addressed the sidewalk issue would have been for the town to reconstruct sidewalks and then to have assessed the cost to the abutting property owner. The challenge in a town like Simsbury is we have so few sidewalks that when you look within a neighborhood, the person across the street whose children use your sidewalk and you're responsible for shoveling it, and now when it's reached the end of its useful life, you would also be required to pay for it, along with your neighbors that shared that same burden. So back in, I think it was 2017, this board changed the ordinance to put that responsibility of the recapitalization of the sidewalks onto the town. We hired Beta Engineering Group, which is the same firm that did our roadway inventory and analysis, I think 10 years ago?
10 years ago.
So we've done this before, Tony and I. And we went through, and using Beta, we started off with, you know, we own just shy of 14 miles, different materials, and started with what do we own so that we could come up with a plan of how do we get to sidewalks that are in a state of good repair? Tony, if you want to talk a little bit about the program and how you developed it?
All right. Thanks, Tom. So the inventory that we conducted was comprehensive in nature, focused on sidewalks and curb ramps. Initially, I'm going to talk about sidewalks. It's a GIS-based approach, so all the information in the field is collected electronically using laptops. No paper was used on the project. So we're trying to be sustainable there, but efficient. So it focused on, you know, inventory of the sidewalks and curb ramps. We conducted an ADA assessment, and I'll get into more details on that as we move into the presentation. A big part of it is analyzing the information, organizing it in a fashion like you'll see it tonight, so you can understand the existing conditions of your sidewalks and curb ramps. GIS is a great tool, so we're able to look at things geographically throughout the community. Step three in the process is prioritizing and planning, which is probably one of the more critical parts of the project. And that really gets involved with how you can prioritize your improvements, what the costs are, your budgeting, and ultimately, your schedule. So how far out do you want your plan to go? We've done a lot of ADA compliance programs with communities. Some range from 10 to 30 years. And we'll present the schedule for, propose schedule for Simsbury as we move in. Data management and tracking, ADA compliance is essentially a, it's not something that you submit a report and it's completed. It's something, it's a living document. It's something that you have to update annually as you make progress, and that's one of the requirements of ADA compliance. Field assessment, like I mentioned, we used a GIS-based approach. So the town has a lot of good GIS mapping that's available. So we took advantage of that information and leveraged that the best that we could for conducting the field investigation. But in general, in terms of the sidewalk data that was collected, we looked at a wide range of different issues and distresses, different cracking depressions that you could see with sidewalks. We tried to organize the data in a simplistic manner. I mean, you could collect probably 20, 25 different types of data when you're out there, but we tried to organize it as such so it's useful for Tom moving forward in terms of developing his maintenance program. Existing conditions. So as we mentioned, you have about 14 miles of sidewalk throughout the community. Almost three miles are new, relatively new, so those were built, say, within the last three to five years. Good condition, about three and a half miles. And then you have your fair and poor condition, which are really, those are the conditions that you need to initially focus on.
And the new sidewalks that Tony was referring to is primarily the streetscape work, which is a little older than three or four years. It's holding up well, so I think that's a good sign. But other than that, there hasn't been any new sidewalks constructed. And I think it's also important to note that when we're talking about sidewalks, it includes the sidewalks along our state roadways. Those become the town responsibility, the way the DOT manages the process.
We're not talking about the trails, though, right?
We are not talking about the trails. So this is specific to what would be traditional sidewalks. Really, what we want to talk about the most tonight is the sidewalks that are in fair and poor condition. These are the ones that need to be brought up to a condition which really is representative of how we want our infrastructure in town to look. You can see that the sidewalks are generally clumped into a couple of small areas in town. And again, we're a rural community. We don't have sidewalks in every neighborhood, so where we do have them, we want to make sure that they're representative of what we need to have people walk safely. And I think part of what the data showed us is that we had a number of areas where we had small gaps, a couple hundred feet maybe where a sidewalk didn't exist, and that's one of the things that we're looking to address in this program. And the other interesting thing that we found is we have a number of sidewalks that lead to nowhere. Or we have sidewalks in locations that perhaps at one point served a purpose, but at this point, we certainly shouldn't invest the money in replacing them. The one example we have down on the right is Church Street Extension, which is a very small cul-de-sac which leads to a hiking trail. Do we really need a sidewalk on that road? There's five homes. Should we spend the money to replace that concrete sidewalk? Should we burden those residents with shoveling that sidewalk in the winter when it could be a month before somebody walks on it? And I think we want to talk about in the future a process for how we would go about removing an existing sidewalk, just the same way we want to use a lot of caution about filling in those gaps, because again, people are always concerned about the responsibility of owning the sidewalk. We're hoping that, to a certain extent, the gaps and the cost of the gaps that we need to fill in is really going to be offset by the sidewalks that we're not going to be replacing as part of this.
All right. ADA compliance. You know, why do you need to do this? So basically, every community in the United States that's 50 more employees is required to develop what's called an ADA Section 504 Transition Plan. Most of the communities we work in, we do a lot of GIS and asset management work, do not have a transition plan. So this is a step in the right direction for the community. So as of right now, you're in the process of developing your ADA compliance program. Like I mentioned, it's really, it's not something that you just go out and collect it and put it on paper and it's done. It's something that is going to be a living document. Things change, priorities change, costs change, budgets change. So you're always, you know, trying to work the best you can to accomplish as much as you can related to ADA compliance. In terms of the requirements, you're familiar with curb ramps. This is a sample diagram of how a curb ramp is required to be built. So there's different dimensions that need to be met. There's the slope measurements that need to be met. The yellow panel that you see is a detectable warning panel, so that's for the visually impaired. So all of these different elements go into constructing your compliant curb ramp. As...
No, I just say, I think this kind of fits in, again, with the town's goals that we saw through the pedestrian bicycle master plan. It also comes in with being a walkable community, an age-friendly community. It's bringing our infrastructure up to the standards that it really should be at.
And in terms of the curb ramps, too, when you're doing road repairs, you're required by federal law to upgrade your curb ramps to be compliant as part of that roadway project. So that's something that happens just routinely with Tom.
That's correct.
Here's some attribute information that we collected in the field. So as I mentioned, everything has been GPS or geographically located on the town's base map. So you have a point feature that represents the curb ramp. You have the little street name, the intersecting street, the material type associated with that curb ramp, general condition. So those are your existing condition information, and then you get into your actual assessment. And this is really the nuts and bolts of how you prioritize which curb ramps need to be done first and why. And it's primarily due to these, the ramp dimensions, the smart level reading that I mentioned, the detectable warning panel, visible obstructions. So you could have some vertical obstructions that could be causing an accessibility issue. So those are the types of things that you need to look at. That can be a challenge when you do have, say, utility poles or signs or other things that may be in the way that you may have to move.
Again, just following up on the ramp discussion, the ramp condition is important, but I think the big number here, the number that is a little shocking when you first see this, is that out of our 308 existing ramps, over 90% are currently not fully compliant. And that's not a number that I think that we're happy with leaving. It's something that, again, this is a relatively new law. It's something that many municipalities are still working to catch up on. I think we're maybe slightly ahead of the curve of other municipalities of our size, but I think this is certainly the time to bring that discussion up and set a plan forward so that we can be successful going forward.
I'd like to just add to that. So the compliant number, 8.2%, that's a trend that we see throughout New England and the communities that we work in. You know, most are not compliant because they're in compliance, I'm sorry, because they're not aware of the regulation. But a lot of the construction that was done, say, through a period of 10 years of time, a lot of curb ramps were not built to meet the standard. So this is something that we're seeing, anywhere from, say, five to probably, we're seeing at the most, maybe 30% compliance is the best number that we've seen.
Can I ask a question? Over that period of 10 years, and you said most of them weren't built to compliance, is that because we chose somebody who didn't know how to design a curb, or because they changed over the period of the 10 years?
There was changes in the regulation over time. That did take place. But I think a lot of it now is that the regulations have changed to a point, like where you have, slope has changed, detectable warning panels are now required. So a lot of, there's been a lot of changes, I'll say, in that 10-year window.
Not an issue of working somebody who has essentially liability because they misled us or didn't know what they were doing?
No, typically, that's not the case.
Okay, good.
Now, I guess this is where the meat and the potatoes come in, is really, with this data, what are we recommending as the real path to go forward? We're looking at replacing about seven and a half miles of sidewalk, and those are the ones that are in the poor and fair condition. We're looking to rehabilitate or replace all of our non-compliant ramps, and we definitely want to make sure that we focus and prioritize this plan on the walks that see the most use. So we want to focus on the walks around schools and business districts, and that goes hand in hand with looking for the walks that don't serve a purpose anymore and making sure that we're not investing in those. We're looking at a seven-year plan for the replacement of the sidewalk that would go concurrently with replacing all of the ramps along those sections of sidewalks, which would then leave us potentially an eight-year follow-on program for the remaining curb ramps. Again, we have flexibility. We could make that more aggressive. We could aim for 10 years. Working with Beta, again, they're giving us information on what other communities have done, and I'm certainly open to your input. I mean, really, in many ways, you're the ones driving how quickly we want to hit this goal.
Tom, my understanding from the recommendation is that, after seven years, that the high-traffic areas would be up to compliance, and then it would be another eight years for those lesser-used areas?
That's correct. And the other thing that's going to add into this, and it was a little hard to get the analysis to really shake out, but as we're doing all of our sidewalks replacements, we're going to be upgrading the ramps there. And as Tony mentioned, when we're doing a roadway paving program, as we're paving, we cannot buy a sidewalk ramp and leave it non-compliant. So part of our pavement management program will also be picking up some of these walks. So at the end of the seven years, we may be much closer than we're currently looking at, but we don't have the full look ahead on our pavement management plan overlaid with our curb ramp assessment at this time to really give a finite number, but it'll certainly be even a little bit better than what we're currently projecting today. Just a snapshot, we're looking at, you know, like I said, the seven years at about a mile, mile and a tenth per year with a budget of roughly $300,000 per year, and then the follow-on program for just the ramps. But that's not taking into account the ramps that would be captured during our pavement program.
And that schedule right there is essentially ADA compliance right there. So the Section 504 Transition Plan, this schedule is really what it all boils down to. And that's what the feds want to see. If they come in, if you were to do a review of your plan, this is what they're going to go immediately to. The other aspect of this is actually tracking this. So year one, for instance, maybe you do more than one mile of sidewalk. So maybe that's 1.5, say, for instance. Maybe you're able to do 20 curb ramps. So that schedule, essentially, that 15-year schedule might become 14 years instead of 15 years. And that's updated each year, so that's something that will provide training on how to update all this in the GIS and through updating the report.
And there are communities that have been sued as a result of not having the transition plan and not working this to a solution. And I know Tony's been involved in that heavily.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I've been involved in several lawsuits where the communities didn't have a Section 504 plan, and there was litigation involved. So they had to fast-track their program and spend a lot more money upfront because of the lawsuit. In this case here, you're in the process of developing your program, so that's going to put you ahead of the game like Tom said before.
And now, the good news is, once we get these sidewalks and ramps up into good condition, the question is, similar to our roadway program, what's the annual cost to maintain, give or take, 14 miles of sidewalk? And you're looking at roughly, we call it $4,000 per mile. Or, again, we're going to round up $54,000 a year to keep the sidewalks in good condition once we get them there. Okay, questions?
Yeah, just going back to the 15-year schedule. So I'm inferring from what you're saying that that 15-year schedule is compliant with, you know, the federal regulations, the wording and intent. Yes?
Yes. So the schedule can be as long or as short as you want it to be. So there's no, you're working within the means of your available budget. Rule of thumb is you should be spending about 20% of your road budget, so to speak, somewhere in that range. But other than that, it's really your plan. As long as you have a plan and you're doing your due diligence to maintain the plan...
Right.
Then you're maintaining compliance.
And Tony, you were saying you see up to 30 years, you know...
Yes.
15-year in comparison to other communities, you know, about average, a little bit more aggressive?
I'd say right now, for considering the size of your community or your network that you have, I think that's a perfect-size plan.
Okay.
I think, you know, some communities we've worked in, some cities, where they have, you know, thousands of curb ramps or 100 miles of sidewalk, for instance, it's going to take them, you know, longer, up to 30 years, say, to get into compliance.
Sure.
I had the opportunity, thank you, Tom Roy, to participate in an exercise where I tried to go up and down Hot Meadow in a wheelchair, and then I did it blindfolded with a cane as if I were non-sighted. And I have to say, even with those improvements that we have on Hot Meadow, it is very difficult. It was terrifying, and even sections of Hot Meadow that are heavily trafficked were difficult to manage. And I was wondering if the different types of surfaces that we have, you mentioned streetscape surfaces, are a factor in this. I know we've discussed bricks and pavers and the differences in those before. And are those going to be considered when we start to make those type of changes, particularly on our high-use areas downtown?
Well, right now, what we're proposing is that for the roads that are along our state routes and the roads that are along our collector roadways, using Firetown Road as an example, we have five-foot-wide concrete sidewalks. And for our more rural roads, the neighborhood roads, we would do four-foot-wide asphalt or batuminous sidewalks, which again, is very similar, especially up in like the Squadron Line, Musket Trail area is what you would see. For the streetscape projects, they've generally been grant-funded, and I think before we build any more projects, we should probably have a larger discussion of what the appropriate surface is. I think, I know that we have started with brick. We have a large amount of brick now. There's no plans at this point to recapitalize the brick. All of the brick is still in very good condition. But going forward, from a user standpoint, from an ADA standpoint, do we want to have concrete sidewalks with brick accents that, again, has been done in a number of communities? So it would tie in, but it may be that more user-friendly for somebody that is in a wheelchair or somebody that is seeing impaired, because as you said, I was right next to you in the wheelchair, and it was tough.
I know you were, and it was very difficult.
Melissa may have been there, too.
What other questions do folks have? Joan?
Go ahead, Mike.
I am assuming that while we have a 15-year number, the reality is that the backend will probably be different because as the paving goes on in town, we're going to fix things as we come to them, as opposed to, well, it's not on this...
Right.
Instead of fixing the problem as we come to it.
Exactly right. From this point forward, you know, we've been made aware of the regulations, we're aware of where we're deficient, and we are not going to turn a blind eye as we go by anything.
Great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
So I appreciate this. This is great. To me, as I look at the schedule, I almost feel like, to some extent, where nickel and dime is something that we can fix a lot quicker with, not necessarily a lot of money. I mean, I know 2.6 million is a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of capital projects, it's not. I mean, we've bonded 2.5 million for paving every other year, right in prayers, and I'm not... So, I mean, is there a way to look at a schedule that accelerates this and we can do that more quickly? Because, again, 15 years, I get that federal law lets us do it, but if we can afford to do it more quickly and with everything else, we should.
No, and I appreciate you saying that, because as Tony could tell you, originally, I was aiming at 10 years, and we started looking at the numbers. And when, you know, again, you start saying sidewalk ramps, what number are we looking at? at? And I'm certainly open to go more aggressive. And what I would probably recommend is that we get one or two years of the sidewalk program underway, and then we ramp it up from that point forward. I think, right now, we're looking at how we would be bidding some of our contract work, whether we would have to do specific projects, or whether we would be able to unit cost contracts and still be competitive. So instead of doing full engineering bid documents for every sidewalk, we would simply be saying, this is the minimum slope, this is the maximum slope, this is, you know, we're paying you by topsoil and seed and all of these other small things that go into a sidewalk, and just go. Same thing with the ramps, where they would not be done in conjunction with a sidewalk, we're looking at a unit cost. You know, we're going to tell you that we have 50 of these throughout town, what's the number? And then we're going to just strictly performance-based contract.
Yes, because if you go back to the maps, like, I mean, also, I mean, geographically, I mean, does it make sense, just whatever, you know, in the first year, you do all of Terriffill, or the first year, you do all of Squadron?
Mm-hmm.
Because, again, it makes sense for the company that you're bringing in there. And again, if that number is 500,000 or 600,000, you know, but that's an argument, at least I'd be willing to hear, because it makes sense to tackle a larger area versus you do half of Firetown one year, you do half, I mean, then...
Yeah, and we're definitely...
Are we really solving the problem?
Yeah, and I think we've talked before on some of these things, probably first year, and we're not, everything's not locked in, but we'd probably be looking at the asphalt sidewalks up on the Musket Trail area. With the overall condition, would probably be where we would get the program started this summer. Terriffill is certainly high on the priority list, looking at the conditions. The other thing that could support us along this way is there may also be some grant funding for some sidewalks, certainly something that we're always looking at.
Okay.
You're right. At the same time, the small projects at times can be very difficult to manage, where if we're going to do it, let's do it.
Are you going to add something, Maria?
Yes, thank you. I'm giving a little bit of my budget presentation away, that will be coming up in two weeks. But, you know, I anticipate we're going to be having some lengthy discussions around capital, our capital needs, how we've been funding them, the debt service we've taken on. And we have some pretty significant projects coming up that we don't have a choice in doing, such as the radio system and the golf course irrigation system. There is, we own five dams, I don't know if folks knew that, but we do own five dams, and a number of them, to be brought up to current standard, require significant rehabilitation, and we just received the results of that. So looking at our overall capital needs and what we know we're going to have to bond for, versus what we should be trying to pay for in cash, that was part of, you know, looking at this over that 15-year cycle. And again, we can adjust it as needed, but trying to look at, how can we implement this in a way that we might be able to reasonably pay for the sidewalk improvements with cash? So we're not trying to do a bond issuance, say, to just tackle the work, you know, with maybe a two- or three-year time period where we're bonding for the, you know, 2 million and some change to get the work done all at once. So that was a little bit of, you know, my thinking in supporting sort of the 15-year plan initially, that's certainly flexible, we can work with that. But again, this will be part of that larger conversation within capital, because we do have some pretty significant capital needs coming up.
Great. Any other questions from members of the board? Great. Thank you very much for your work. Both of you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
We're going to move on now to a presentation from Tom Tiberzki on the Flower Bridge and the park. I thought it would be a good time to just do a review for the public of what's coming with this park. And right now, the park doesn't have a name, so I'm just referring it to as a park near the Flower Bridge.
Very wise.
As a result, though, it's unfortunate, but staff has determined that in order for the construction of the park to occur, the bridge is going to have to be closed for much of the 2019 season. And I wanted to acknowledge that we have some members of the Flower Bridge Committee who maintain the flowers on the bridge, and I just want to publicly thank you for your partnership in this process, because I know it hasn't been an easy decision. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Eric. And yeah, I was going to acknowledge the members of the Flower Bridge who are here tonight as well. Adam Kessler from the Engineering Department is here as well, and Maria and I can certainly answer questions that may come up through the presentation. So as you know, what we're looking at is a June, or you may have heard, we're looking at closing Old Bridge Road, starting the first week in June, to begin this park project that's been in the planning for the better part of four years now. Just a brief history on where we are today. The property, the one Old Bridge Road parcel was purchased in 2014 for $150,000 through open space committees and Board of Selectment approval. Conceptual plan was developed for the park, and funding was approved in, I believe, 2016 was when you guys approved your conceptual plan. And then, this is what that plan was in 2016. So as this has moved forward, additional, it was recognized that additional funding would be needed. A lot of that is from the original FEMA grant that was requested for the demolition of the house that does sit in the floodplain was almost $42,000, but through this process, it was found that the house does contain a level of asbestos that, and hazardous materials that do need to be removed. And since then, the Engineering Department has put a new grant in requesting a significantly larger sum of money to assist that abatement. And as it shows here, the amount that was approved for the park in '16 and '17 totaled $420,000. The Engineering Department has all their permits in place, except for the DEP flood management permit, they're still waiting for that, and they're waiting to hear back on the grant, the revised grant application for the hazardous asbestos abatement. Is that correct, Adam?
Yes.
Yes, so... So this, again, shows what we're talking about doing down there with the scope of work for the project, is the demolition of the house and the removal of the hazardous material. We're looking to construct a pavilion, as you see in the rendering and the one that's being passed down the board right now. Construction of a pavilion, much similar, if you're trying to visualize it, it looks like the one at Sims Ray Farms that was constructed on the hill a few years ago. Storage shed, which will be utilized by the Flower Bridge Committee for their activities. Paver walkways, coming from the bench through, I'm sorry, coming from the west entrance to the bridge around the new landscape, the park and the pavilion. Bike racks, additional bike racks, new picnic tables, some portlets down there, and they'll have one of those, there's a barrier enclosures around it, so it's a little more visually appealing for a park. A drinking fountain will be installed and new security bollards as well at the entrance to, before the entrance to the bridge. There'll also be a pathway going down to the riverbed, not quite to the water, but close, right, Adam? But within 15 yards, 15 feet, so...
Depending on the water height.
Depending on the water height, yeah. So, the, and that'll, so that, you know, that'll be our, you know, access for kayaks or people who would like to canoe. I believe that's on Hopbrook, right? It's not on Farmington?
Correct.
It's on Hopbrook, so. ADA compliant, and obviously, a bunch of landscaping, there's going to be a lot of removal of invasive species down there, and then replanting with natives and specimen trees and plants.
Or anyone who saved the rhododendron that's there?
The one by the house?
The 34.
The, I was just down there before the meeting.
It's the nicest rhododendron in town.
Yeah.
Personally, I'd like it relocated to my house.
I was, if we're talking about the same one, I was just down there before the meeting, and the deer have pretty much taken it apart.
Oh, no, it's above the roof line.
Are we talking about the same one? They've eaten the lower half of it, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty much, the lower half is...
I'm kind of partial to that tree, or bush.
The, there are some specimens that will be moved as part of the project, right? Is that correct? A Japanese maple, I think, and something...
There's one other, I think, that's getting relocated.
Yeah.
But the rhododendron's probably going to be demolished.
Yeah.
All right.
And there will be some electric service, some of the current improved electric service down there, near the Flower Bridge. We are planning on having, I think, some outlets available on the pavilion for events that may go on there. So this is the newer rendering, and this is what just passed down, and this is what the audience has to view here. Hopefully, this is what our beautiful park will look like come next spring. And just to give you an idea of, again, the pavilion that we're talking about, the shed and the park benches and the bollards.
Is there thought around people being able to rent the pavilion?
Yes, possibly. I think we'll have quite a bit of requested use down there from the groups. I mean, we already get quite a bit of weddings on the bridge, and I think the pavilion will, not only during the weekdays, you know, give people a shaded place to have their meals or enjoy on their visits, but I think those more structured visits with the wedding pictures and that kind of thing, I think they'll make use of this, and we may get some more reserved activity down there. So just a quick schedule on where we're looking to go. The Engineering Department's looking to start the bidding process on March 1st, hopefully tie something up in mid-April, and, again, as I said, start construction the first Monday in June and wrap it up by the end of the season in November. We have reached out with the cooperation of the folks from the Flower Bridge to the groups that typically utilize the bridge in the spring, the Burgers on the Bridge event, obviously, the Tooten Hills Duck Race, the, we're counting for, the June date was picked because of the road races that take place, the Iron Horse Half Marathon that takes place. We tried to move the construction far enough back, but still get it done this year, but accommodate those longstanding traditions and that have gone on here. So the bridge will be open till the first Monday in June.
Tom, is Drake Hill Road being paved? I should probably ask the other Tom.
Yes, yes, actually.
Isn't that, are they going to...
So, this spring, I mean, Adam could speak better to it than I can, but in case I missed something, the new bridge on the Drake Hill Bridge is, there's going to be new decking and improvements on that bridge this summer?
That one, no.
When is it happening?
That's happening in June as well. We're kind of just going to take over the whole area. That is part of another grant that the town received a few years ago.
Right.
And that, the bridge has some concrete deck repairs and some joint repairs as well, and the Riverside Road will be milled and overlaid at the same time.
Okay.
The traffic plan for that would be basically after rush hour, one-way traffic on Drake Hill Road. At the end of the day, the contractor would remove the cones and the maintenance of traffic, and it would be open to two-way during the night.
I'm just picturing construction equipment for the park going over newly paved roadway on Drake Hill. Is that okay?
We would anticipate the paving for Drake Hill and Riverside Road to happen probably in the fall.
Oh, so after...
Yeah, so the intent would be to take care of the bridge itself and all those repairs.
Okay.
And then, in one, you know, possible, do all the paving at once on both those.
Thank you. I was confused by that schedule.
So, as we mentioned, and as Eric mentioned before, that all of these construction projects are going to necessitate the bridge being closed this summer. We did, the town staff, Maria, myself, the Engineering Department did, worked cooperatively with the folks from the Flower Bridge Committee to make the very difficult decision to not plant the bridge this summer and close. The bridge, the construction project's going to necessitate Old Bridge Road being closed, basically, at the entrance to Drake Hill. There isn't available parking on the east side of the bridge, on Riverside Road, and then, again, you have the paving project that's going to happen this summer. So it would make it very difficult for their volunteers to have access to the bridge, to keep the flowers in bloom throughout the summer, and they, you know, they're a dedicated group, and it takes many hours to keep it looking the way it does. So, both sides, there'll be no access to the bridge from the east side or the west side through the construction season this summer. We are planning on keeping, at this point, the east side garden on Riverside Road maintained. The volunteers are going to try to do that as best they can.
And we've already talked about the road improvements. Any questions? Sean?
So, I got to ask, the demolition, we had town staff, we had experts go in there, before we bought this thing, after we bought this thing. What's changed? We went from $40,000 to $280,000 for demo?
Right, and a lot of the...
It's more than the house cost.
The hazardous material assessment that happened after getting a grant was a little bit more destructive, where they actually start poking holes and whatnot and getting samples from the wallboard. And the bulk of that cost is associated with finding asbestos in the joint compound. It's just something that happened during that era. And it's one of those unknowns that we're, we're still kind of, we're not sure where it's, the bids are going to fall, because there's some, like Massachusetts looks at that as, all right, you have joint compound that contains asbestos, but your wallboard doesn't. So that's a composite sample, we don't want to fill up landfills with that material, so just treat it as normal construction debris. Connecticut is not that specific, where they're looking at as, your joint compound has asbestos, therefore, everything contaminated, and that's the result of basically the increase in costs. So, I think it's about $220,000 was estimated by our consultant to take care of just that portion. Whether bids will come in at that number is to be seen yet, but it's part of the reason we've gone back to FEMA for additional funding to cover that cost. And from what we've learned from our consultant is that the nature of this grant is that they don't want hazardous materials to kill a project, essentially. So they're more than willing to flip the bill. So that's kind of why we're waiting on that grant. So we're, we request additional funding for that, as well as removing the timber wall that's there. It's deteriorating, it's starting to fall in, so we're trying to get a few extra dollars in there. Essentially, what happens is even if we were granted, say, $300,000 total from FEMA, and our bid came in at 200, we would only spend 200 of that, it's just the eligibility cost.
So are we just beginning FEMA approval before this goes forward?
We are calling every week to our local state agency to try to expedite everything and try to get an answer on that.
Because otherwise, we're going to start a project that we don't yet have fully funding for. Right?
Right, and I think we can, we're under this, I mean, we all want to ruin the budget presentation, and we're requesting additional funds.
I saw that, yeah. That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking, because 200, 200's a big number. And if we start the project, and then all of a sudden, our hands are tied in the budget process, then we can't start the project, in my opinion.
Right, so we're requesting additional funding for this fiscal year to, for that, as well as some other aspects of the project, too. I mean, at the end of the day, I think we'd love to come back in front of the board and say we didn't spend everything.
Okay. We like that.
It's a very fun presentation.
Because we got to do sidewalks, you know, so... Yeah.
Okay, going, going, thank you for going back to Tom's riveting discussion on sidewalks. It looks like there is a, in the diagram, a little sidewalk portion that sort of shoots off up to the left, is that something that connects up to, like, the Iron Horse Boulevard area? So people can get from that area down without being on Drake Hill?
No, there's, well, that's an existing path right now that's up near the intersection with Drake Hill Road.
It is?
Yeah.
Is that a curb cut that comes down, right, I mean, to the, or is it just a foot? Okay. So is that going to be redone, or that could be tucked into the FEMA number, so we don't have to, Tom have us pay for that in a few years?
I think that's part of some other trail project.
Yeah, that's a trail, that's actually in good shape, isn't it?
One other question, since you brought up Tom's presentation, that bigger projects might be easier to manage than smaller ones. Are there repairs to the Flower Bridge that are going to get done at the same time, or are we going to ignore that?
No, it's...
Oh, failed that.
Because it needs to be painted.
Because while we've got it all closed down.
Yeah.
Right. Nice. Right, and so, in an ideal world, the assessment on that structure would have been done, I think, you know, sort of years ago in preparation of this park project. Unfortunately, there wasn't funding in place for the assessment. This year, we did have funding to do the assessment. We have some, the consultants working on that, we have some preliminary ideas of what that might look like, but we will have firm numbers in terms of what that will be. So it will be repainting the bridge, as well as just some general structural repairs to the bridge. The bridge itself, my understanding, has not been really improved since it originally became what is now Flower Bridge, so, you know, close to 30 years. Again, ideally, I would have liked to have seen that done together, but with the way that the projects were planned and funded, that's, it's just not possible. In terms of the capital budgeting process for the upcoming year, the project, as the concept plan was approved, we do not have sufficient funds to fully build out the entire concept plan. Currently, there were two separate capital appropriations totaling $420,000 for this project. We do not believe that's, again, sufficient based on the design that we now have in place with, is the spirit of the concept plans. So as part of the capital budgeting process, you will see a request for an additional appropriation of about $150,000. So if that's ultimately approved by this board and approved in theory at referendum, that would all happen prior to the construction actually taking place in June. So we would know if we had that additional money to sort of fully build out the park as planned. Certainly, if we didn't receive that full funding, we could try and, you know, cut back, scale back on the scope of the project and the work, and then maybe try to do another phase at a later point in time. But again, as it was originally funded, it was not funded at a sufficient level to actually do the project.
Does this funding, because we, the Board of Finance was kind enough to give us not only the purchase price, but also the demo money in one appropriation when we bought it. So does this 420 include that as well?
The 420 is in addition to the money that we used to purchase the home.
But there was more than 150 in that account. There was 200 or 220. The Board of Finance gave us the money for the demo and for the acquisition together in one capital appropriation.
We will go back and look at that.
Yeah. And then we requested additional funding later on for the improvement. So we already had, because their whole point was if they were going to let us buy the house, they wanted us to commit to demoing it, and they gave us the funding together.
Okay, so you think there might be an additional $40,000?
There should be. I want to say it was even 200 or 220 at the time.
There was money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was like 78,000.
Yeah, there was money in the demo there, and that's why...
We will certainly research that, because any extra funding we can pull together for this project is a good thing.
Trust me, because I get yelled at for this project every two weeks at family dinner. One, now that we've closed the Flower Bridge as a result of it, but two, because a certain former Board of Finance member wants to know why we haven't torn it down yet, so, yeah, but there's, there was definitely money for the whole package in the original appropriation.
We'll research that.
There is one thing I'd like to add to what Maria was saying about the, you know, the timing of all of this. The engineering department is working under a deadline on their FEMA grant. That money had to be spent before the end of this year, otherwise, I think they were going to lose it more or less, right?
Yeah, we asked for an extension to the end of this year, so no matter what, the house is coming down.
So that was going to happen this summer, you know, it had to happen this summer, so...
How confident are you guys that this is going to take place this year?
Very confident. I mean, we're getting service from FEMA right now, but to be honest, we're, from our consulting, getting a bid package together, everything's lining up to fit it appropriately.
I'm sure we didn't anticipate being here four years later, so I'm just wondering how it goes. And then I assume also just that we're going to go beyond what would even be considered necessary or conceivable for communication about when that bridge is going to close down, because even though we give the most amount of ideal heads-up, we're going to get flak for it.
I will say, we worked really close with the folks from the Flower Bridge, and thankfully we started working with them sooner than later, because they have to place their order for the flowers in the bridge in mid-December, by mid-December. And if we hadn't had those meetings and hadn't, you know, we would have been pushed back potentially another year and not, and maybe not been able to use that grant money, because they would have spent their, well, they would, or they would be out the $15,000 or so that it takes to put their plants in boxes.
I don't want anybody, I don't want anybody associated with the Flower Bridge to bear the brunt of any sort of...
Right. Which we did, thankfully, it's not going, hopefully it's not going to happen. Their subscribers have been very, the response they've gotten from their subscribers has been overly, you know, positive so far, and everybody's been very understanding that, you know, this is for the greater good.
We should use, avail all town resources, communication methodologies to...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, thank you very much for your work. This presentation will be posted on a fairly prominent part of the town website, because I think it's something that people are going to be interested in. Next, we have a presentation from the Clean Energy Task Force to learn more about the Sustainable CT program. And if it's something that the board is supportive of, we can follow to move forward with that tonight.
Do you know how to use this? Do you know how to use pencil slides? You just hit that.
Okay.
I know you're excited about the sidewalks. I'm going to do very little talk on this one, leave everything to Sherri Calnan, who's just been really spearheading this project. As you heard at public audience, there is some support for this. We've really done a lot to make sure that it's something that's going to add some value. I know the Clean Energy Task Force has been behind this, they've been working with the recycling committee, and it even extends beyond that to things like our open space and our planning processes. So I'm going to turn it over to Sherri and duck out of the way.
Thank you. Thank you for adding us to the agenda tonight, and I want to thank Maria and Eric for joining us with the Sustainable Connecticut presentation that we had back in December. So I'm going to make this a very brief synopsis of what this program is. Sustainable Connecticut is an independently funded and grassroots organization that's based at Eastern Connecticut State University. And what it does is bring together municipalities and communities and wrap them around shared goals of resiliency, sustainability, and civic engagement. Now, I'll go into the next slide. What this program has is three parts. It has a roadmap, and within this roadmap is the shared best practices. So, you know, for instance, we want to know, how do I become more sustainable? What do I need to do to become more sustainable? And how do we get there? The second part of this is that there are a tremendous amount of resources that are available to us. There's technical assistance, there are 12 fellows, which are student interns, that are available during the summer to support our efforts. There's free seminars and webinars and collaboration with other municipalities. And then the third portion of this is the certification process itself, which, once certified, would last three years. So here, we want to talk about the platform itself. The platform represents efficient, effective ways of using funds by propping up programs to success. The success is a result of the communication that will happen externally and internally by working together to achieve the various actions. So it's just going to force the enhanced communications between different groups, working together to achieve the actions that are required for certification of the program. There are nine actions, or I should say categories. These are the nine categories highlighted and bolded, and we have to, in order to be certified, we must do an action within each one of these categories. Now, there are subcategories or subactions within each one of these categories, and each of those subactions come with points, and we need to achieve a certain amount of points that are required to get the certification. Now, the good news is that past actions or past efforts do count, so it doesn't mean that we have to do everything brand-new. These actions were developed back in 2017, and they were developed by local and state government departments, community organizers, nonprofit leaders, academia, and business owners. And they came together, they were folks that were within the state of Connecticut, and so it was by municipalities, for municipalities, so to speak. Within each action are benefits. They'll have at least one benefit, but usually they'll have multiple benefits. These are the icons that identify the different benefits and would be next to each action. Each action would provide, you know, for an example, would be, let's say, the bike path could possibly meet a transportation action and have a health benefit, because it's providing wellness to our citizens. The environmental impact benefit would be cleaner air and water, it would be preservation of our natural resources, the greenhouse gas reductions would provide lower emissions, and the one that you will like to hear about is the cost savings, cost savings to our municipal budget and operations. So we have additional benefits. There's currently 72 municipalities that are registered. 22 of those have been certified. They had the inaugural certification round last fall. And the wonderful benefit is the peer sharing that happens because of the full transparency of the program. This transparency accelerates the exchange of information amongst the different groups and municipalities. There is a sophisticated website, and once registered, a town gets its own dashboard, and this dashboard will track the data. It tracks how many points you've achieved and how many actions you've achieved as you move forward. Another part of the benefits is that you become a part of a learning lab that is driving innovation and spawning new partnerships. So this is a timeline. Should the board decide to move forward, the first item would be to pass a resolution with a statement of intent designating a staff or municipal official as their point of contact, and then from there devising a core sustainability team. The application for certification, initially, you can submit a pre-read, which would be May 2nd, with final applications being submitted by August 30th, and notification by mid-October. So there's two certification levels. You have bronze and silver. Now, according to Tom Roy in his quick assessment, Sinsbury could easily attain the bronze certification. And based on talking with another municipality that received certification in October, where we're at in our calendar, it would be doable to achieve a bronze certification this year. And then the silver certification could either be tabled to a 2020 or a 2021, and you would probably know more as you work through this year where you're at and if you could achieve it next year or the year after. There's one new item that is required this year, and that's this equity toolkit. This has to be a new action, it cannot be a past effort, but it could be something like holding sustainability events in town. This is a suggested list of where the members of the sustainability team could come from. It would be a coordination of municipal staff and volunteers. It really is how you see fit. Every municipality has handled it differently. And that information is all on the website, where it will show the different certified towns and what their teams were comprised of, the members that they had. Some had all staff, some had staff and volunteers, and some had all volunteers. Some municipalities partnered with another municipality to achieve the certification. So there's a lot of ways to approach it. The cost of the town is, as far as certification, is there is no cost to register, and to achieve the bronze certification, if it's based on efforts that's already happened, then there would be no cost incurred. It would just be a matter of finding the documentation and uploading it in a format that is required to achieve that certification. So the purpose of doing this is to become more sustainable, become more resilient, and it's a holistic approach to creating a way of showing the town's achievements to its citizens in a very simple format. It's also allowing you to set the bar a little higher every year to improve upon our processes and ways to bring together the different departments within our town and the different committees, and encouraging them to talk to one another and, you know, share the talents and the knowledge that the different groups have. You know, whether it's the Clean Energy Task Force talking to the school capital improvements department on ways to improve their energy efficiency, for instance, that's one example. And that would be a point that is part of this program as well. As far as future cost, it would be based on whatever the efforts are of the town in terms of what your goals are within the different action categories. And I have, and I'll pass this out, I have a brochure, this is the Sustainable Connecticut brochure, and it will show on the back the nine categories and some of the subactions that are affiliated with that, so it will be a little bit easier to understand.
Can I ask a question while we're here on staff things? Do you have any examples from other towns on how much staff time this requires to do these certifications? We have some experience here in town with bike-friendly communities, we have the age-friendly thing going on now, and we have a variety of other initiatives that, while all very good-intentioned, tend to, you know, drain on our staff, who works very hard. I mean, not that it's not a good idea, but as I, you know, we do have things going on that do take a lot of time, particularly at our director level, and, you know, all of those meetings that you're talking about are, you know, people who have work to do in other areas, so...
Well, you know, I tried to drill that down with Sustainable CT and with other municipalities. It's a tough answer, really. For instance, one municipality, it was all staff that was part of the core team. So she was really unable to give me an absolute number, and what they were doing was achieving a bronze certification, and they had already done most of the efforts already, so it was a matter of just finding the documentation and uploading it. But it is a time-consuming effort, right? I couldn't get, I couldn't get an actual man-hour timeframe.
Having seen the bike-friendly application, and Tom, maybe you can corroborate this, this is not that.
It cannot be that.
That's my concern, is that, you know, we have placed a lot of demands, you know, to do these initiatives, and they all are certainly worthy in their own way, and, you know, we would like to be able to support all of that, but we can't be cavalier with our staff's time and efforts, you know, because it's going to take away from other essential services that need to get done.
And I can help. I sat down with Sherri when we met with representatives from the other town, it sounds a lot like West Hartford. And again, they did things with a lot of staff time, and it was a lot of people investing a certain level of time, which was hard to measure. I think, like all of these things, and when we sat with the folks from Sustainable CT, and similar to Bob Einstein's comments, there was originally a concern that are we just pushing paper to say that we did all the things that we've already done, and if they're not driving us to do more things that are in line with what the community wants to do in terms of sustainability, there's not a value. And they have these fellows, interns essentially, that are designed to help with some of the process, and I guess my only suggestion would be that we have to be willing to say that we don't know all of the man-hours invested in it, and if we are to choose to go forward, we just have to also accept if all of a sudden it does look like it's going to be a binder this thick, and it's going to be, you know, 20% of any staff members' workload, we have to really start saying, you know, we have to be able to hit the brakes. Everything that we're seeing so far is that it's meant on having standardized documents that capture some of the work that we're already doing and help you plan for the future.
Those 12 interns handle the whole state? Those 12 interns handle the whole state?
Yes, they're dispatched to the 12 councils of government. So, you know, we'd have like one or two that would be, one or two that we could access. I mean, there's 12 for the whole state.
Right.
So we'd have one or two to access to assist us.
During the summer months.
During the summer months, but also you have the staff of the Sustainable Connecticut at Eastern Connecticut State University, plus their partners such as the Connecticut Green Bank. That's one. There's a number of partners that will assist municipalities as well. And really what this does is it takes what you're doing already and puts it in a little bit more of an organized framework and enhances the communication that's happening so that things are happening in a more efficient way, rather than this department doing this and this department doing this, and everybody's kind of on their own. It kind of brings it together.
Can you explain what that means, this department? So like, you're talking about like Tom and Tom's departments who are really well-connected already? I'm confused as to what this does.
What I would, what I looked at is that when I found out that there would have to be another committee, I cringed. But then when I thought about the idea that, looking at that list of proposed members, I don't think that those are folks who routinely get together and collaborate.
Agreed, but if it's staff time, the staff is getting together and collaborating. I agree that commission members don't, but Tom and Tom are sitting right next to each other with Adam. They, they know, again, I'm trying to, I'm always about the numbers, but what are we not doing that this offers?
Yeah, well, my initial reaction during the presentation is I'm, I'm much less interested in codifying what we've already done and being able to put a plaque in my office.
Yeah.
I'm much more interested in, I think, I think Bob put it better than anybody could have during public audience, that it's about providing, providing structure for moving forward.
Providing structure, yeah, absolutely. And, and it's also setting the bar a little bit higher. Once you've established the foundation with the bronze certification, you know, and you want to go after a silver certification, you're now setting the bar a little bit higher in terms of what you're trying to achieve here. And I think what's really important is that the younger generations see sustainable communities as a very important part of their decision-making process of where they are going to live. More and more young generations are staying in the city and staying in the city to raise their families. And so I think that this is something that is going to becoming, become more and more important on the checklist of reasons why I want to go live in Simsberry.
I agree.
And that's because it's a sustainable community. It's sustainable, resilient, and has equity in its decision-making process. Not that it's not being done already, but this way you can, you can kind of put it together and say, see, this is what we do.
Yeah, I mean.
It will also allow the citizens to see what you're doing in a very easy, concise way of interpreting it.
That's fair.
So, you know, any resident would be able to see that.
I guess, I mean, and I am in that generation that you're talking about. I mean, one-third of this town has preserved open space. We've done a really proactive job of public-private partnerships with converting our farmland and protecting our trails, converting buildings, et cetera. So again, as I scratch my head, I feel like we're really well good with this. So do you need this? Because this isn't going to benefit us, from what it sounds like. It's going to benefit your staff and your department. Do you need a plaque to do that?
I'll jump in. So, you know, one of the advantages I do see of proceeding with this program is really it's a learning tool and I think perhaps a roadmap for moving forward. So again, sort of the access to peer communities in terms of ways that we can improve our sustainability, whether it's maybe, you know, building initiatives we haven't thought of, or, you know, a policy on low-waste events, or, you know, that there's the opportunity to access knowledge and expertise from initiatives other communities have engaged in that, again, maybe we haven't done or haven't thought of. So I think in that regard, it could be a really valuable learning tool for us and perhaps present a roadmap for future sustainability initiatives that we may want to engage in, whether it's from a programmatic perspective or, again, even from a capital budgeting perspective in terms of improvements that we might be able to make to our infrastructure. But again, I think that's one of the benefits that I currently see for participating in the program.
Are you going to add something, Chris?
Yeah, I would pick up on some of Maria's words. I really look at this as continuous improvement. I think Simsberry is ahead of the curve with this, in part because we've had some particular staff members who have been really energized around this, and we have members of the community who have been really energized around this. So what this enables us to do is begin to think about how do we get to the next level, you know, with this whole initiative? So that's, that's one thing. I think there is a value to that. I think, secondly, we do have to, you know, we, we put a lot of value into wanting to embrace the volunteerism that there is in the community. I do think that sustainability is an area where there's been a very strong constituency of volunteers that want to pursue that, so I'd like to foster that. And quite honestly, I don't think this would be here if staff felt it was overwhelming and something that wasn't achievable. I think we would have gotten that signal that, you know, that, that was the case. And what we've heard is if we discover that it's overwhelming, we can, you know, redefine how we want to participate in the program. So I see, you know, very, to me, it's just a continuation of a path that we've been on and trying to get to the next level.
Just one more. So Tom, can you let me know what our score is when we do this for drought and municipal water use, given the recent actions we took this year? I was going to say, we better, we better get 15 points for that one, given the.
So finally, Sean acknowledges the value of that ordinance. There we go.
Yeah, nothing like bureaucracy that's paid for by the state.
Looking for an objective. You know, usually when we, when we are presented with programs, whether they be tax abatement programs, whether they be school concessions, redesigns, districting, whether it be, whether it's the golf course, whichever, there's always a voice from the other side that says, "Don't do this." So there's nobody here tonight in the audience who's telling us not to do this, but, so I'm going to ask you to play devil's advocate. What would be your reason, what we're, somebody would oppose everything that you're saying here?
A pro?
Yeah, to give me, oppose it. To give some perspective as to why somebody would say, "Don't bother this, don't do this, don't..."
I, the only thing I could think about is that it's going to take some man-hours, you know, to put this together. But I don't see that as really a con, because through that process, I think there's going to be a lot of benefits realized from it, from the encouraged extra communication that's going to happen internally and, you know, internally to the outside community with business leaders, the different organizations, talking about equity, which is a very hot topic right now, a very important topic that is new and is a new part of the conversation. So I think this helps pave the way for that conversation.
Okay, so no, so other than somebody saying, "I, I don't want the town, I don't want talent resources spent on this," or somebody saying, maybe one of my peers saying, you know, "We already do this," there's not some secret anti-sustainability Connecticut group meeting in a basement somewhere in Connecticut hatching a plan that we shouldn't be doing this sort of thing, right? There's not, nothing grave.
Not that I know of.
I don't want to, I don't want to do something that's, I don't know enough about this and I don't just, I don't want to do something that's irreversible, that we've set ourselves on a path and we have to follow something because of what's present.
Tell me if I'm wrong, but if we decide that, we get into it a little bit and decide it doesn't make sense, we don't have to continue.
No, you don't.
Yeah, there's no risk in doing this.
And if, let's say if you do do the bronze certification, it's good for three years and you can leave it at that and not do any more.
Yeah.
I'm always interested in, of zero, and I am, the funding and resources, if we can avail ourselves of something that down the road allows us to teach our children better about sustainability, and that can cover alternative sources other than federal money or from the Board of Education, whichever, that to me is worth it unto itself.
There is, there is grant funding, there's accelerator grants coming up. A number of the grants are, applications are due February, March, but there's new monies that are supposed to be coming onboard that I haven't seen yet, so I'm not sure what they entail.
Thank you.
I think it gives us an opportunity in a lot of areas, like solar access rights is a conversation that's happening. There's no zoning or regulations for that in the state or.
Oh, we know.
Mark Scully and I have been exploring this and having discussions about it, though, and, you know, there's opportunities going forward as far as new zoning regulations. You know, that can be a topic. There's also on another subject with food waste, you know, building, public buildings that serve food, you know, that could be, you know, that's an action point that could be explored. So I think it really poses a lot of opportunities.
Are there other questions for Sheri? Great. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
So I'll see if we can introduce the motion and then see if there's any additional conversation. Is our motion effective February 11th, 2019, to adopt the attached Sustainable CT resolution and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola and Public Works Director Tom Roy to execute all program application materials?
So move.
Second.
Is there any more discussion?
Not directly on the proclamation, but we would have, the group would need to meet within 90 days. What would be the process by which we would identify what our project team is? Have we?
Sure. So I've given a little bit of thought to that. Would definitely consult back with the Clean Energy Task Force. I think that they've put together potentially a really good shell of what that membership composition might look like. So I think that we could probably tackle it in one to two meetings. Potentially, we bring you back a recommended structure, and then at the subsequent meeting, suggested appointments to the committee, or perhaps we may even be able to consolidate the all into one meeting. But again, I think that they've presented a pretty good shell and just maybe review that to make sure that we're all feeling, you know, comfortable with that recommendation and, again, bring back some potential recommended appointments.
Yeah, just an observation, when I looked at the mission of representative from the Planning Commission, it kind of stood out to me because a lot of these issues do touch upon planning. And I think this would be ideal for one or two at-large members of the community who have volunteered on our website or want to volunteer to this issue, so I would be open to that as well, so.
Yeah.
I think that would be a real good way, Chris, as you pointed out, for these newer members to get some investment and work through the system.
Yeah. Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
We are, it's interesting actually, thinking about the three presentations we had, because there's a, there's a thread that goes through all of them in a way, so they weren't as disjointed as I initially thought. All right, the First Selectman's Report. The first thing that I wanted to share were some reflections that I had after what has been, I'll describe as a difficult week in Simsberry. And so I'll read this, and then anybody who, who wants to reach out to me, I'm more than happy to chat with and meet with anybody who wants to reach out to me. Over the past week, our town has been at the center of a conversation about race and diversity, and I have heard from so many residents and former residents during this time. I appreciate everybody who's reached out to me to share a perspective. No doubt the intensity of the conversation reflects the divisions that are playing out in our country. Personally, I have no interest in rehashing the specific incident that gripped our town over the past week. However, I am highly interested in figuring out how we can make Simsberry a welcoming place for everyone who lives, works, and goes to school here. Conversations about race don't often happen organically. If there's anything positive that comes out of this otherwise difficult week, it is the fact that our community is talking, and I think we need to keep talking. One of the privileges of holding elected office is the opportunity to get to know a community intimately. During my time in office, some of our residents have shared with me a perspective on our town that a white man such as myself might not otherwise be privy to. I'm grateful for the candor of these conversations, but I'm saddened by the implications. I am pleased that Deacon Art Miller will be providing programming to some of our students. Community for Care will be organizing a wider conversation. Thank you, Cheryl, for taking the lead on that. Also, members of our Board of Education met with the NAACP, and I'm told that it was a productive conversation. Diversity training and forums are just the beginning. Creating a place where every person feels safe and welcome, I believe, is the responsibility of all of us. Simsberry is a unique place. We're an outlier when it comes to our level of civic engagement, and it's my hope that we can use this as a springboard. I hope that we can seize the opportunity to come closer as a community through conversation, listening, and mutual understanding. So that's my, those are my reflections on this week, and I appreciate you listening. I'm going to move on to the rest of my First Selectman's Report. First, an update from the Planning Department. One week ago, the Zoning Commission approved a distillery for the Hickson Building. That's the depot building behind Bank of America. The operator is relocating from another part of Simsberry, and that's expected to open to the public in the spring. Demolition permits have been filed for the removal of buildings on the Big Y property. There are no plans for redevelopment at this time. However, staff will be contacting the property owner to discuss the status. And development and management plans have been filed for the Deepwater Wind Solar Project with the Connecticut Siting Council. Staff is evaluating the submission and will be providing the board a detailed update at a future meeting. I'd like to offer congratulations and well wishes to Sergeant John Durkin, who's retiring from the Simsberry Police Department after 34 years. Sergeant Durkin served as dispatcher, officer, detective, and 20 years as a sergeant. He's also a Simsberry resident, and there'll be a party in his honor February 17th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Trinity Church in Tarahale. Members of the Board of Selectmen are welcome to attend, as is any member of the public. Metacomet VFW Post 1926 is inviting all veterans, current military, and their families to a Veterans Appreciation Breakfast. That's on Saturday, February 23rd from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. That'll be at the Main Firehouse at 871 Hot Meadow Street. The event is being provided free of charge by the Simsberry VFW as a thank you for your service. And the VFW asked me to share that members of the Board of Selectmen are welcome to attend. I think the last thing I'll share is just a brief update on cell service. There've been, we know there've been five boosters that have been put up around town. Some of them are currently on, some of them are not. But I think the one that we're, we're most watching is the one right in our central business district, and I just wanted to share, it's not up yet. We contacted Verizon, and they're still waiting on a part, which is good news, because if it was on, it's not working very well. So that's, that's my report. Maria?
Thank you.
Text me, I couldn't hear you.
Under Board of Selectmen Business, I just want to bring to your attention, under the Communications Section, it's HB 5254. Folks are referring to it as the Municipal Open Space Funding Bill. Today, we received correspondence from the Conservation Commission. The correspondence is similar in nature to that we received from the Simsberry Land Trust. They are seeking the board's support of that bill. If this is a topic that the board is more interested in learning about before making a decision whether or not to support the bill or not support the bill, I would be happy to help schedule a more structured presentation of information and a more structured conversation on the topic. So again, if that's something you would be interested in, just let me know, and we could certainly schedule that as a future agenda item. For departmental news and notes from Public Works, I'd like to commend Doug Redknock for going above and beyond during the recent winter storm event. This was just, I think, another really lovely story and example of the professionalism of our Public Works staff. But we had a resident who reached out to us to share a pretty scary experience in her own words, that she had had in the recent storm, and she was traveling home, and her vehicle got stuck, and our plow driver, Doug, very skillfully plowed her out and helped make her feel really safe and helped her get home, and she was just so grateful and reached out. And, you know, so often, we don't hear those wonderful stories of, again, our staff helping, going the extra mile and helping our residents, so just wanted to share that and commend him for that work.
Great, thank you. It's awesome.
Welcome. From the Police Department, I'd like to congratulate our Police Department on their recent recognitions of excellence at the Law Enforcement Torch Run kickoff for Special Olympics. Officer Laurel Harrington and PFC Lauren Devon accepted the recognition of excellence on our behalf at an event held on February 5th. In 2018, our Police Department raised over $15,000 for the Connecticut Special Olympics, and I want to express sincere gratitude to Chief Bolter and all the members of his team for raising funds for such a worthy cause. Thank you.
Right.
And for special events and programs, I did just want to bring to your attention the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. Their Greater Together Listening Tour event that was scheduled for tomorrow evening at the Simsberry Public Library has been rescheduled. They are anticipating inclement weather. And so that. And so that event has been rescheduled to Thursday, March 14th at 5:30 p.m. at the same location at the library. I'm really looking forward to this initiative because the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving is going to be setting aside $100,000 for each community in that service area. $50,000 would be used for projects here in Simsbury in the immediate near future, with an additional $50,000 that would be established in perpetuity as an adowment for future projects, and that they would be establishing an advisory committee regarding that later piece. So again, I think it's just a really special opportunity for the community. I'd encourage board members, as well as members of the public who can attend, to attend that event and let them hear, you know, what is most important to us. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to selectman actions. Item A, tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective February 11th, 2019 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $64,344.45 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the refunds?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item B, is a proposed donation from the Simsbury Farms Men's Club. Is there a motion effective February 11th, 2019 to accept a donation in the amount of $9,608.39 from the Simsbury Farms Men's Club to be used to support expenses associated with the fifth green renovation project at the Simsbury Farms Golf Course?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries with our thanks. Item C, so the Simsbury Police Department is a car seat fitting station, and the Connecticut Department of Transportation and Yale New Haven Hospital is providing a grant to car seat fitting stations. I wanted to see before we move forward if anybody had any questions about this grant.
No, I think it's outstanding.
Yep. Is there a motion effective February 11th, 2019 to submit the 2019 Connecticut Department of Transportation and Yale New Haven Fitting Station Grant Application and to authorize PFC Lauren Devon, certified car seat technician, to execute the grant application?
So moved. And thank you.
Yeah. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And along with, is there a motion effective February 11th, 2019 to accept the grant, should it be awarded to the town, and to authorize PFC Lauren Devon to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Also, sticking with the Police Department, the Police Department has the opportunity to apply for a grant that would pay for overtime so that our officers can conduct distracted driving enforcement. Any questions on this item before we move forward?
Remember these dates?
Locations.
And locations. We've had members that are no longer sitting here. Forget these dates, so.
I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go there, but on my, actually, I will. On my first, literally, my first day living in Connecticut, I got a cellphone ticket, and I'm so embarrassed because I don't use a cellphone when I drive, and no one else should either, but.
The text can wait.
I, exactly. So I appreciate, I appreciate the effort. So with, is there a motion effective February 11th, 2019 to submit the 2019 distracted driving high-visibility enforcement grant application and authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to execute the grant application?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And is there a motion effective February 11th, 2019 to accept the grant, should it be awarded, and to authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries. The last item, item E, is a request from the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. A little bit of context, the Performing Arts Center submitted a request to the town seeking a contract amendment that would allow the Performing Arts Center to be charged a lower rate for police. Currently, the Performing Arts Center is paying the private duty rate as opposed to the lower rate, which is allowed with town-sponsored events. The PAC's full letter is in your packets, but I wanted to summarize for transparency. In the letter, they shared that they incurred a loss last year, and they attribute that loss in part to the inability to secure a large-scale commercial concert outside of the Hartford Symphony. And they shared that police cost is one of the largest expenses, which is why they are requesting this lower rate. Before we open it up for discussion, I know Linda Schofield and Bob Hensley are here from the Performing Arts Center. Is there anything that you would want to add? And if so, I'd just ask that you step up to the podium. Would you mind just stepping up just so the mics can pick you up? Thank you.
I was hoping that you would continue the, you were approving things so. I thought you'd rush right through that. I don't know you. I know all the rest of the gay dudes. I'm Bob Hensley.
You know what you just said, right? You gave Bob a microphone.
How are you? I have a better one than you, Eric. The first day I was a selectman, I got pulled over by Gary Gray for turning right on red at Stratton Brook and Route 10. And when I got to the next meeting, we had, our chief at the time came up to me and said, "Have a little trouble at stoplights, huh?" So there's no secrets, you know, in the town that we live in, sustainable or not.
Everybody has a.
Appreciate very much the opportunity to be here. The Performing Arts Center is a jewel to the town and certainly something that we all enjoy in the summer and spring and fall. Many years ago, the town was responsible for managing the Performing Arts Center, and when I was on the Board of Selectmen, we had a part-time manager that we hired during the summer months. It was very difficult at that time because there was not a full-time person there, and of course, now we have a full-time executive director. And Missy would be here, but she had a prior commitment that her family had planned for her. Last year was the first year in many, many years that we sustained a loss. You mentioned the loss. And when I was on the Board of Selectmen and when I left, Mary Glassman at the time was the first selectman and asked me to run it for a couple of years. And to, the mission the board gave me was to not lose money and to, not to lose money and make sure that if we could, we made money and prepared it to go private, which is what we did. We now are a private 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We have made money almost every year since that time, except for last year. Last year, we didn't have any major concert performers that were not related to the Hartford Symphony, and.
Are you afraid?
Checking up on you.
You, you know what I mean? There are no secrets here. Officer, Officer Gray, it's nice to see you. Always, always good to see you, I would say. So, so one of the things that we try to do, and we've tried to maintain it, and as a tenant of the town and a maintainer of that beautiful facility during season, we add to its value by doing a lot of work on our own and keeping it at a very high level of maintenance. It's difficult because it's an expensive function to provide to the town, and as great as it is on a beautiful summer night when the symphony's performing, it's challenging to meet the expenses, and we do a great job. Linda has been great at bringing grants in to help us provide funding for different events. The symphony's a great tenant, but the things that bring us the most success financially are outside performances. And Missy's working now on this current season, and we have, because she's full-time and because we've had the opportunity to work on the season right from the end of last year to today, we have a number of things that are in the works that, for this summer, that are pending, some conversations that we're having this evening. One of those is the public safety expenses that we incur. And when the town ran, back to my original starting story, when the town ran the facility, we paid the lower town rate for maintaining public safety. And certainly, we want to be compliant, and certainly, we want to do whatever we can to make sure that the facility is safe and is well-maintained during concerts. But we're asking that the town consider giving us the rate for town-sponsored events because it is at such an important and such a significant expense, and it impacts promoters that are looking at us to bring events here, and it affects new promoters that look at us and want to sign long-term contracts with us to bring events to the facility. So, so this evening, the conversation that Eric was mentioning earlier is to ask for your consideration to reduce those expenses so that we, like other town sponsors, I mean, after all, this is a town facility. We're merely the conservators and leasers of your facility, and it's such an important item and such an important asset of the town, and we have many things planned for the future there. So this will help us to sustain that and to continue to grow the facility.
Thank you. Before we.
Can I just add a point or two? Some of you may remember, I know Mike, and I think Cheryl, you were on the board at the time that I started the triathlon some years back, and it was a simple.
I was there, too.
You were there, too?
Yeah. I'm actually the longest.
Unanimously voted, I mean, it was like just that fast, and it was an easy process. We didn't have a contract, and in fact, this issue of the police rate is not in our contract for the Performing Arts Center either. So it can be done whichever way you prefer, to add it as a contract amendment or to simply vote for it as you did with the triathlon. It doesn't have to be a contractual process because it's never been in the contract. And I just want to talk about the urgency of acting because of, you know, as Bob mentioned, we have a long lead time in booking acts, and so we are in negotiations right now. I mean, this week, that we're hoping to get a multi-year contract with one entity, which would really help us a lot in terms of the sustainability of a revenue stream. But it's a very long lead time. You know, we're booking acts back in November, December, January, February. So, you know, we don't want to wait months or weeks even to make a decision, if at all possible, because it will affect our ability to attract acts. And, you know, the issue of whether we're making money, the point is, in order for us to be financially sustainable, we have to be able to attract promoters. And in order to attract promoters, you have to have a cost profile that is competitive. And so by reducing the police cost, it would make us a more competitive place. And once we can attract people, then we can, you know, sell things and charge them rent and stuff like.
We need to remain a viable alternative to promoters that consider us against other facilities that they could go to. And it concerns me, and I've been involved in that facility since the day that we sat in the first selectman's office and raised the first dollar to build it. It concerns me that after all these years, that what we put up at that time in 2005 has not really changed. We, we, we need to maintain it and grow it and add on the other things that we at that time felt we would do in just a couple of years. But we haven't for all kinds of reasons that are out of anybody in this room's control. But we have this great thing going on, and in order to get private concerts, by that I mean not HSO concerts, not the Hartford Symphony. It's a wonderful tenant. It's a main anchor tenant for us, but the margins for us on bringing in private concerts, The Beach Boys or whoever, are incredibly higher and actually provide us the cushion we need so that we can do all the other things. So that's, I mean, that's a long way of saying.
And we do have some who get the lower rate and some who have to pay the higher rate, which makes it a non-equitable situation.
I just wanted to see, before we have a discussion amongst ourselves, are there any questions for them?
I do. So purely from a financial standpoint, the information that was provided to me is we're talking about a $3100 difference here over a, over a season, because the financial impact on the submission indicates that for 56 hours, S-PAC paid 15 grand roughly in the '17-'18 season. And if we switch to a lower rate, we're talking about $3100. If you divide that by five, you're talking about $635 a concert. How is $635 a concert all of a sudden going to put you guys in the black?
It's, well, number one, I don't, I can't address that. That was Maria's number, so maybe she can answer that, but I don't know where that, where those figures came from. But again, keep in mind that what we're talking about is the ability to attract future folks who, you know, future promoters.
I get that, but how does $635 change the finances so dramatically?
Where's the five? Is that Hartford Symphony concerts?
Just, this is the information provided in the submission.
They pay a different rate.
They pay the lower rate.
They pay the lower rate.
This says SIMPAC paid private duty events.
Sure, I can elaborate on the analysis, sure. So the chief and his department assisted with the analysis, and the data that I asked them for, as I said, let's take a look at the private duty events for the most recent fiscal year that closed, so the entire fiscal year, the private duty events that the PAC paid for. How many hours did officers work, and what was that rate? Because they did pay, if you will, the going, the going private duty rate. So then, based on that analysis, based on that most, again, that most recent fiscal year, we took, if we were to have charged them the lower rate, the town-sponsored rate, what would that difference have been? And so again, in the analysis, that's where that $3100 difference came from.
So keeping in mind that there are several events there already that already enjoy the lower rate, so there's just some that don't.
Yeah, but to be clear, this conclude, this includes Tedeschi Truck, Two Left Feet, September Fest, the Simsbury Fleech Mortgage Board, and the Summer Solstice are part of the private duty rate. So again, Tedeschi Trucks was a mainline event, substantial event, so again, we're talking about a couple hundred dollars difference for that concert. I'm really confused as to why this is going to make such a difference financially.
I can't, I don't have the benefit of what you have, but I.
But wait, you guys don't know what you paid?
It's more than $200.
So, yeah.
If we wouldn't be here for $200.
You're averaging.
I would have written a check.
Across all, my guess is that, like, there's not as much police time for certain events as there.
So Maria's number is a 21% reduction in the cost. I'm not sure, because we are hearing different math in different scenarios. But Sean, from my perspective, the fact that it was such a small amount in terms of the cost of the town increases my receptivity to it as opposed to decreasing my receptivity to it, so.
I'm not even at the receptivity part. I guess I'm confused as to why this is being pointed to as the, in the red or in the black item. We're talking about a couple hundred dollars here.
I don't want to speak for you, but I think that you're hearing from promoters that this is a significant.
It's a deal, right?
Yeah.
That's what they tell it. We have an opportunity to get a three-year contract that Missy's working on, Missy DiNuno is working on now. And one of the hint, one of the hanging points is whether or not there can be something worked out to get the three-year versus doing this one time. There's a hanging point is public safety. And I, I mean, I, I want to provide.
Bob, could you explain? First of all, thank you. And so the, if I hear what you're describing, and I know you can't allude to too much, you try to allude but not reveal too much because the negotiations is within. So the client, the act is looking at your facility, and they're probably looking at a whole number of things, which you can promise them, show them, you know. The level of safety, though, isn't it not, is it not, regardless of how much we charge for the service, the safety is consistent, no matter what is, right? The level of safety is consistent. So how, so where, what do they see? So just help me, what do they see as being the one who's considering coming here? What do they see as a concern relative to the cost of safety? Does that make sense?
It's the hourly rate. So.
But that's being borne by the ticket ultimately, isn't that not getting, aren't you then shifting that to the cost of the ticket?
Well.
No, the promoter has.
The promoter.
The promoter has to put together a package to present.
To acts? Yeah, I know.
They put together a package to present to the booking agent for the, for the event. And they, it's difficult for them to put together a package that keeps their costs down so that the event, the band, the group, whoever is being considered, doesn't look at that. at that, at the booking agent, and say, "We can't go there because we have to sell 7,000 tickets in order for us to make any money." As opposed to what we have determined to be our target market, if you will, of events that are between 3,500 and 4,000, which is a much lower group. But in order to climb over all of the expenses of putting on an event down there, including this subject, they, they look at a, a number of tickets that have to be sold that's greater than what they feel they can comfortably commit.
So I was leading, thank you, so I'm leading down that in the sense that other than passing the cost on to either you raise the tickets and sell less, or you sell a whole bunch more, right, so I get that. You have two avenues for cost recovery there. So, but, so then clearly there must be some missing math here because it can't be so, and I, we're all kind of coming to this late. All this stuff, all this stuff is sort of foisted and us very late, we've got letters floating back and forth to different parties, we've got these numbers and stuff. So, and there's, there's, there must be some bigger componentry here to understand that cost differential.
I think we pay, I don't know.
Yeah, from what I understand for Missy, it's about twice as much.
You paid 7,000 for the Tedeschi Trucks public safety officers, eight hours for eight officers plus the vehicle hours. Six, $7,000 was the cost for the public safety at that show.
And what I understand for Missy is that it would be about half of that if we were paying.
That's not accurate.
So that's, that's not, I mean-
That's, that's not accurate information.
I, I can't, I can't justify your, your numbers.
Which is what you have in your hand or what we're saying?
This is our information, Bob, this is from the town. And I'm surprised that you don't have the numbers, but that the, the other, the how, the HSO rate is not half that rate, from what I understand.
No, the, the, we do have, there's, there's some issues with the math, so.
I would argue there's not, Chris, I mean, the, the HSO rate right here is 62, 61, that's not half.
I completely understand, okay? Cause I've looked at the math as well, and I also submitted this as an area of requests. So, um, the information that Maria gave us, if you look at the addendum that was added to the contract, it basically stipulates that the, uh, the, the rate, the, the non-Simsbury org rate is a hundred dollars per hour per officer, or 10 dollars per car.
For a vehicle, right.
If you look at the information that was given to us by Maria-
Yep.
-it translates to $267.14 per hour, per officer, plus car. And the new rate would be $210.69. So that those, those rates are all disconnected. So there is something that's going on with the math that we don't have accurately. I'll go back to, for myself, the fundamental question is my receptivity to doing this and offering the rate, um, more so than debating what, you know, what the math is saying, so.
And I can say that I've, I did ask Missy, it's not like I came unprepared about how much we paid. And yes, about 60 bucks an hour for HSO is, is what she tells me, and about 100 plus the 10 for non-HSO. So I'm not sure where all of your numbers came from, but that's what we know that we pay.
I'm doing a straight line, there's no, there's no voodoo math there. It's eight times eight times 100 is $6,400, times the vehicle hours is 560, 6960 is what you paid. That's, there's a check somewhere in the finance department from the PAC for 6960. I mean, that's not made up numbers, that's-
I can't address-
I'd like to share how I'm looking at this issue, and I'm looking at it a little bit differently. So when you think about what's the, what's the PAC? The PAC is performing a function that the town has decided that it no longer wants to provide itself, and it's better performed by a 501(c)(3). Um, so I think, I'll, I'll speak for myself. I think that there's a, a strong interest in having the PAC be a viable organization going forward. I have no interest in the town picking up these activities. Um, and when I think about what's the price we should be charging for police? I think that, uh, right now with the private duty rate, the town is essentially making, there, there's a margin there, the town is making a profit on that. Whereas the town-sponsored event rate is precisely what the, uh, what the cost of the officer's time is for the overtime. And that to me philosophically makes sense, given your mission and what you do for the town. So that's the way I'm looking at it, and I wonder if other board members-
Don't disagree with you, hold on Bob, I don't disagree with you, except for the fact that we're, we're introducing a third-party for-profit entity in here. And that's where I'm, I'm not with you philosophically. There's a promoter that's making money as well here, this is not just the PAC. Keith Mahler, and the only reason Keith Mahler isn't coming back isn't because of our private duty rate. We, we all know there's another reason he's not coming back.
Isn't almost every group that comes down there trying to, trying to raise money, they're either raising it for a cause, or they're raising it to sustain another nonprofit organization that's a-
I agree with you.
I mean, there's not an entity, there's not a race, there's not a bike event that comes down there-
Those are, those are non-for-profit causes, you're right.
A chili cook-off that doesn't try to raise money for somebody.
For nonprofits, yes.
And the fact that we have a for-profit event that is a main resource to us come in there to help us sustain and maintain the nonprofit that's taking care of your facility, our facility as a town, is a very important piece of the financial.
I understand that, Bob, but it makes it a slightly different animal.
We couldn't continue to do things that lose money.
So I, I, I'll say, take, take the, we'll put the temperature check in the, here, in that, and I don't know if this conference, this is actually, this comment is for discussion, or I don't want to hold them as if they're witnesses and they're being proposed. Um, but one of the things I'm, I'm struggling with, and I'm glad this has come up, because it's a learning process for me, and that is, um, the, the, the folks who are involved with the S-PAC are, I mean, you do, you provide a fantastic service. I mean, I've been there, I've availed myself of these services ever since it was, uh, was put up. And I've never seen a group of people, uh, when, when an event is put on and their volunteers are there hustle more to do what should be considered for-pay activities to make sure that that place operates in the, in the, uh, at the level we expect it to. And as Eric, when Miss alluded to, in this kind of concept of this challenge was brought before me, I was befuddled about the fact that we have different rates for security purposes, which is something I, which is something I need to get my head around outside of this. Because I know that the chief's, uh, people protect the citizenry of Simsbury at the same level, which is the top-notch, possibly ban, regardless of where they're getting paid and what the, what the event is. Now, if the event dictates that we need more security or less security, we should certainly pay for that to address the securitization of it. So I have no problem paying, I have no problem authorizing for more. What I do have difficulty in understanding is, if short of making a profit, which the town is not in the market to do, it should just be charging a rate that gets the job done. Relative to exclusive, absent of any contract requirements that we have with those officers, the price should be the same price regardless of what the event is and who is there. Now again, we should pay, we should charge more if more security and services are needed, that's fine. But I don't believe we should be in a different level. Because you look and smell like this, and look and smell like that, I don't think we should have multiples, otherwise we're getting jammed up like this. And the fact that there may be somebody benefiting in the, on a third party, I actually, much as that does grind me sideways, I actually don't have a problem with it because ultimately, this is a cultural event that is, that is adding and, and enhancing quality of our citizenry. So we, that's, that's an outcome we have to bear and deal with, but no, going on.
Agreed, but here's the challenge though, Chris, is that we charge our for-profit businesses in this town, the private duty rate, for traffic duty, et cetera. We've, 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 this is intentionally the way the system has been designed. We do this, as do every other municipality. The police commission put in substantial effort and research to look at what an adequate private duty rate was, as we do with our building fees, as we do with all of our other fees. I don't disagree with you on the fairness argument, but where do we start and stop this?
I don't-
Do we, do we charge Mike Gerard less money because he lives in town, but we charge a Canton business more? I mean, again, I'm not disagreeing with it, but we've created an entire system of inequity based on either for-profit, non-for-profit, partially non-for-profit, and at, at the end of the, end of the day, a 20-minute discussion up here may not be the time or the best way to solve this.
Well, okay, we've just, we've just really drifted from this agenda item into what should be the rates. What's an appropriate private duty rate? I really don't think that's the sphere of discussion tonight. The purpose of tonight's discussion is should the town-sponsored rate be applied to the PAC? We do historically have a different rate for private enterprises than we necessarily do for town-sponsored events. Sean, I think you're correct that, you know, the PAC is a 509(c), is slightly different than other tom, you know, town-sponsored events. But I still think they are far more like and in the category of a town-sponsored event than those in art. So my line of thinking is very similar, Eric, to what you had outlined, which is what I was trying to articulate, is basically, at, at what's being presented to us, the numbers of the town manager, you know, which we're, we're saying are the right numbers, a cost of $3,100 and $61 applied to last year, that's what the cost of the town would be to apply this to the PAC, who we work with in good faith and are in good faith saying to us that this would be a competitive advantage for them booking events this year. Um, and so with that, it's a fairly straightforward, simple yes for my point of view.
I'll, I'll, just going back, I, I'm not looking to any of this discussion, or my decision would be based upon solving your financial woes. That's not, and that's not what you're asking. I just want to be clear for the town citizenry, that whatever decision I make myself, and I'm sure most of them here, we're not going to do something to something, you have other systemic and challenges then that you need to, to face than if profitability is the issue. And that's not why I would be making this, I'm just challenged by the fact that I find, I find your, your organization more likened to be a community enhancement service provider versus a for-profit. And I would err on the side of allowing you guys the, some leeway to continue to meet the missions and needs and focus of, of that organization, which I think are filled, to a certain extent, community-based services, so.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yeah, sure. Cheryl and Mike.
I don't, I don't disagree with you that the, the amount of money we're talking about here is, is small in the big scheme of things. $3,100 is not going to be a make or break. But, um, this contract is up in December, and we are going to have to renegotiate all of this at that time. So whatever we decide to do here tonight, based on the numbers that we have, um, as far as how much this is going to cost the town, which I'm sure you can appreciate, Linda, because you're always looking for that number, um, is not set in stone. I mean, I think we have to acknowledge the fact that, you know, okay, there seem to be different rates here for different parties, but this whole agreement has to be looked at, you know, in December, so.
Again, this is not in the agreement, it's not addressed in the contract.
I understand that, but you're asking us to do something outside of which, you know, and I know it's tempting to come back and say, "Well, that's what you did last year", you know, "That's why we should do it again this year, and why are you taking this away from us?" And I don't think we should look at it like that. This is not, you know, something you can get to come back and say, "Well, you know, you can't take it away from us now, we already offered it to somebody."
I understand.
And Mike, were you going to add something?
Yes, um, I looked at this, I, I'm hearing a lot of, uh, discussion. Um, I do think the PAC has brought a huge value to the town, and I thank you and your predecessors and everybody for having the forethought to create that. The contract is up December 31st of this coming year. I am uncomfortable doing anything beyond that term because we need a new contract. I realize that impacts the, the deal you're working on now, be, being a three-year deal, but I'm really uncomfortable mixing our apples and oranges or-
I think, well, just to clarify, just a moment, I think the, the intention or the willingness to work is as important as how long the work lasts. And so I think, from what I understand, which maybe is more than the average person, my feeling is that promoters are looking for the opportunity or the willingness to negotiate, which that's what makes this so important, even if it's for a short, a short time relatively. Uh, and even though it's not for three years, I'm just, they know that we have a contract that has to be renegotiated and so forth. But the willingness to work is a very important thing to a promoter that's looking at trying to establish a longer-term relationship with a facility or a town.
Well, and, and again, I want to stress that, so like with the concert we're talking about, or the series we're talking about, if it, if it doesn't happen, there's no loss, I mean, either way, if, if we lose the contract because we can't give them a decent rate, then you're not going to get the money. And if you give us the better rate, you're not going to get the money. So it, it's irrelevant to you for these additional concerts. It's hugely relevant to us because we can only be financially sustainable if we can bring events. If we can't bring events because there's this barrier of, of public safety expenses, it, it's, it doesn't affect you, but it sure screws up our ability to be financially viable.
I respectfully disagree with that, Linda. It does affect us because we did a budget based on a certain expectation this coming year. This is going to have an impact on the town's budget. If we agree to it, then we decide to change the rules in the middle of the term, and, and with good reason, I can be convinced of that.
So the impact would only be the 3,000, because that's what was in the-
Depends how many concerts you get in there. But, but the point is, my math is it was about $1,400 difference per contract, and, and we got too many numbers floating around. But I did the same thing we did with Tedeschi Truck, and just did that at a lower rate. And, and it's about $1,400 difference. It is a difference, and then that's my only point. Is it enough where, um, it's going to have a significant financial, negative financial impact? I don't think so. But I also want to set everybody up to succeed because I do value what the PAC does.
Maria, were you going to clarify something?
Yes, I would just like to clarify that the, um, the current private duty fund is a special revenue fund that is outside of the, um, the operating budget. Uh, we're hopeful on the very near future to begin incorporating the special revenue fund reporting as part of the quarterly budget status reports, that is something we've been working on. Um, that particular fund is actually in a very healthy, stable position at the moment. And if you'll recall, um, both the Board of Slaughter and Board of Finance were supportive for current fiscal year of doing a course correction. So we are not funding, uh, any operating expenses out of that special revenue fund. Um, again, more appropriately, I think that fund should be used for, um, capital purchases, equipment purchases, things of that nature, but not operating expenses. So, um, previously, we had been using that fund for operating, but for this year, um, we currently are not.
Just one, so I think we bought half a, half a cruiser out of that a couple of times. I think we, we paid for ammunition out of it for different times, and we've used that in particularly challenging zero required budget years, where $4,000 does matter to us, because we can't get the budget approved. I, I, I'm not arguing this, but the, we get back to the overall fairness, we, we charge the Chili Challenge folks the full rate, we charge the River Run folks the full rate. I mean, so we're charging the Rotary the full rate. So, again, we can approve what we want tonight, but we're not solving the darn problem here.
Yeah, and I would say for me, the, the issue is that you are steward of a town asset, and that's the difference.
The Rotary donates their money to the playground, I mean, you can make an argument that everybody-
So we would ask that, that, that those events through us would, would be getting the better rate.
So, I'll see if, um, if, if option A has support. Is there a motion to approve, uh, Simsbury Meadow Performing Arts Center's request and direct the town manager and town attorney to develop and execute a contract amendment to the operating agreement between the parties, granting the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center the town-sponsored private duty rate for all PAC-sponsored events?
So both.
Um, can I, I guess I'll second that?
I got a question.
But you're looking for support.
It's not, it's not in the contract, so how does a contract amendment do anything?
Well, Maria.
Sure, so I did speak with, um, Bob about this issue, and one possibility would be to essentially do a contract addendum amendment, um, where we could essentially tack it on to the existing operating agreement. And then when we go to negotiate the new agreement, we can make sure that this conversation is part of those negotiations for the new agreement, whatever that duration may look like.
Make sure that's embedded in the new contract.
And we're putting it in, cool.
Yeah. And we can't do it as a one-time, um, funding exception, that's not part of the contract.
But this causes the same effect, basically.
I, I understand that. I'm just, amending a contract is a much more involved exercise than saying we can allow them to offer the, the town rate to a promoter.
Why are we doing this?
See, I like it because it requires us to rediscuss this with the new contract.
I absolutely think we should rediscuss this.
So every issue that people have raised here tonight, this, this proposal forces us to consider that in what I would consider to be the right venue. So, I actually like that option.
So just one more piece of information, the police commission has asked us to send it downstairs, because they feel, whether correct or not, that they have a-
it downstairs, because they feel, whether correct or not, that they have a, a right to weigh in on this conversation, because they do help us establish the private duty fund rate.
My perspective is that they, they weighed in at the time that the different tiers were set, but my understanding is it's the Board of Selectmen that determines who qualifies for each tier.
Don't disagree, I'm just, we got correspondence, just want to make sure-
Yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing that up, but that's, that's-
Yeah, I would agree with that, Eric, I think the Police Commission would be involved in setting the rate, which, again, we're not doing tonight, and I do think they should be involved in providing input in what we want to charge as part of a contract renegotiation, so those would be, to me, appropriate things for them to participate in, so.
We are going with option A, correct?
We are going with option A. So was there any, yeah, the options on the floor, it's been, it's been seconded?
Just to be clear, what, what rate are we charging? What's, what's the darn rate? Because there's seven rates on that sheet.
So if you go to your packet attachment, private duty fee schedule, you'll see that there's the normal event rate, which is what they're currently being charged.
$100 plus 10.
Correct, and then there's the town-sponsored event rate, that would be the event rate that they would be seeking.
So the actual overtime is determined based on the officers that are patrolling it, so if you have a first-year officer versus the chief, there's obviously, that's what dictates the different rate. So this isn't voodoo, we, handshakes in the back, it's determined based on the level of officer that's there.
Correct, and my understanding as well is that some of the benefits rate that is assessed to the outside agencies is not assessed to ourselves, is that correct, chief?
There's no administrative function in it, right?
So, the actual overtime pay rate is whatever that officer makes per salary, salary alone is their overtime rate, and that varies.
So if there's two lieutenants and a couple of sergeants down there, obviously that would cost more than some of the patrol folks, got you. Sorry, I'm not trying to blame you, I just want to make sure we all understand what we're doing.
Appreciate it.
So, and, and just to be clear, we're, we're paying this out of the private duty special revenue fund, or how does this-
Sure, so it's the private duty, right, special revenue fund that would essentially take the hit for this loss in revenue.
Is this an operating expense?
No, no, again, so fortunately, if you'll recall, this year, again, we made a bit of a course correction, and we are not paying for ongoing operating expenses out of the private duty fund, so right now, again, that has a very healthy fund balance, it could certainly sustain this loss in revenue if you decide it.
So make sure everybody understands where we're coming from here.
We're also not transferring funds, so we don't need Linda's approval for it either.
Because I'm sure she would be very vocal about that.
If we're moving money in and out. Then we need to go back to Linda.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Moving on to appointments and resignations, the first appointment is to fill the vacancy on the Economic Development Commission. Is there a motion effective February 11th, 2019, to appoint Tom Earl to the Economic Development Commission as a member with land use expertise, with the term expiring 10th of October 2020?
So moved, thrilled to have him aboard.
Yep. And any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Is there a motion effective February 11th, 2019, to appoint Susan Messino and Timothy Walzak to the Connecticut Forest and Park Association Trail Stewardship Council?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries.
Is there a motion effective February 11th, 2019, to appoint Pastor Gene Ott as a member of Community for Care, with the term expiring December 2nd, 2019?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Yeah.
Any proposed changes to the minutes from our January 28th meeting? Okay, so the minutes will stand as presented. Any selectman liaison or subcommittee reports?
Just one quick thing, thank you for the sort of intro to the Community for Care's work on our, our new issue we're going to tackle. We do have a program already planned for March, which will be on eating disorders. We have a, a local student who has become an author, and her mother, who are going to speak, and some local medical professionals who deal with this issue, so that will be March 13th at the library at 6:30, and we will be looking at additional programming that will be in addition to that regular program that's already scheduled.
Okay, great. Anything else? Okay, is there anything under, there was one item under communication, this was the letter from the Land Trust encouraging the Board of Selectmen to support legislation that's currently in the General Assembly that would allow towns to impose a tax of up to 1% on the sale of property to fund the acquisition of open space, and I think the question is, are we interested in learning more about that in a future board meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think having a discussion will be good.
I think you ought to invite stakeholders to participate in that discussion, real estate professionals, homeowners, those.
Sure, now, and, and that would, that would be, I think, beyond, I mean, to me, I picture us at a meeting, learning about the proposed legislation, but if we were to want to move forward with it, I would want testimonies from those different-
Right, we'd have to have all of us different.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We seconded it.
I'll second. I made it, by the way.
All right, all in favor?
Take my motion. All right. Don't we have to go to non-meeting meetings?